Monday, April 25th is now in session. We can stand. Jimmy, do you want to do the pledge too?
I will. I pray that Jesus
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our heavenly Father, we come before you just one more time. And again, we thank you so much for this little town that we live in and work in. This session continues to be blessed that you would see fit. Clear our minds tonight when we make these decisions that will be good for the town. Again, we ask that you lead and guide our thoughts and our ability to do our job. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, Sandy?
William Ellis?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
Trevor Sager? Pamela Samples? Dan Swafford?
Here.
Okay. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, April 11th, 2022, and executive session, April 19th, 2022.
So move. Second.
Okay, Sandy?
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
This is one motion because I wasn't here for the executive session. I'd like to abstain for that part of it. Darla, can I do that or?
Or do we need to separate the motions?
I would separate the motions.
Do we have anybody who want to amend the motion?
I would move that we separate the two. The first one was the approval of minutes for the regular meeting, April 11th, 2022. Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Although there's a quorum, one has to abstain. Can we still vote?
Yes, because you're not voting on an ordinance. So if you've got a majority of the people present or the council members present, approve it. You're fine.
Move approval for minutes of the executive session held on April 19th, 2022.
I'll second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So move. Second.
Sandy?
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor? Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, ordinance is on first reading. I see none. Ordinance is on second reading. Ordinance 2022-03 to amend Chapter 51 of the Ellisville Town Code to increase rates and charges for water services.
This was introduced at the last town council meeting and reflects the rate increase due to the increase that the city of Bloomington utilities is charging the town for its water. So Baker Tilly, on behalf of the town, did a 30-day filing with the IURC. And the rate that was approved was 85 cents per 1,000 gallons. So this is the second reading. I would like to explain, however, that recently the legislature has passed a bill which does away with utility tax, gross tax on utility income. So that's down on your agenda under new business. So in other words, in two months, you'll get another ordinance in front of you with a different rate. And I talked to Sandy about this, and she would prefer that the council pass the ordinance in front of you tonight, even if it's going to be changed in a couple of months because the city of Bloomington is already charging the town the extra 85 cents. And so the town's losing money. And Sandy tells me that it's not that big of a deal with the town's software to change the billing. So there you go. But I just wanted the council to know in a couple of months, this is going to change again. It was just sort of fortuitous that the city of Bloomington raised its rates at the same time the legislature passed this new legislation.
County council discussion? All right. Any action from the council on this? Oh, actually, yes, I'm sorry. Any public comment on this? A little rusty. Thank you. Okay, seeing none?
I would move approval of the ordinance 22-03 to amend Chapter 51 of the Ellisville Town Code to increase the rates and charges for water services. Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And just to clarify again, I think we've stated a couple of times, we're just passing the fees along. We're not
Yes.
Right. So this is an increase that we can't control. All right, old business quotes for updating the personnel policy. Who has that?
I was asked, I've shown you the copies of the quotes that I had received. And we, Scott had asked me to check some of the references. The two quotes are from New Focus and then the Wagner that did our wage study. And I have talked to Green Castle and Decatur. They're both very pleased with New Focus. They said that they do annual updates to keep them in compliance. They also have assisted with job descriptions and salary ordinances and salary surveys. And even they had a personnel issue. They were able to reach out because you can pay for HR service with them by the hour, and they assisted them with that. So both of them were very good references for the New Focus. I did reach out to Monroe County, who uses Wagner. And they have actually not had them update their policy since 2008. Now they did it, and then the county maintains that because they have staff attorneys. So they maintain it themselves. They have re-contracted with them for another wage study. But I've looked through both policies. And comparatively, I mean, they're both getting, you know, the legal information in there that we need. They're updating our fair labor standards, making sure that we have something in there about lactation for mommies that need that because we don't have anything in our policy. We have to provide a place for that to happen. So at any rate, that was just one that stuck out in my mind when I ran across it. I think they're comparable. And so my suggestion for one-third the price is to go with New Focus.
And the prices again for the two of those?
I have to look that up. New Focus is 5,000. And the Wagner went the wrong way is $14,840 to $16,600.
And we are comparing apples to apples, correct? You did ask both companies that they are going to provide the exact same thing?
Well, I looked at a sample policy from both of them. And I mean, both of them in their letters say that they will bring it up to the Fair Labor Standards Act and all the legal information. So, I mean, I think they're pretty well held to a standard as far as federal regulations and labor laws.
Yeah, I'm just curious because of the price difference. And that's why I was really wanting to
Well, when I went online to the Wagner one is, I couldn't find where they had written one for a city or a town. They cater more to counties, which is a much bigger group of people. Not that that has anything to do with it, but
That did account for some cost difference if they're priced generally for counties. You know, they may not have a smaller price point. I don't know. I'm just speculating.
One thing I liked about both policies. Ours, our policy gets a little confusing because we break down, there's a section for 40-hour people, another section for fire, and another section for police. And like on the hours, then you're searching in the vacation time or PTO. You're searching through three different sections to find things sometimes. And they make a chart for like the eight-hour people, 12-hour shifts, 24-hour shifts, whatever the mind, and it's on the same chart how they accrue their PTO time. That's a big plus in my book. But I mean, I read through both of the, you know, I didn't read them all, but I went through the highlights of them. And they're very comparable to me.
Okay, the supervisors here today have any comments on on that?
Sandy, she talked to us about just what she said, that she's comparing them, which her choice could be the $5,000.
Sandy, can I ask you why you want to go with them? What was the juice?
Well, originally, I, her name is on the clerk treasurer's list, sir, which is a statewide, every clerk treasurer in the state. And when they have HR questions, she will offer a free answer. So that was my first initial association with her. Then whenever we changed our payroll periods, I called her. And I said, I see your name on the list, sir, all the time. This is what I want to do. Do you have any recommendations, the easiest way to comply with that? And she said, give me a couple of days. And she came back with a suggestion, and she never charged me a penny. So I guess, you know, I see her on the list, sir. I see her answering questions. Her rate's reasonable. I've checked two of the references. Nothing negative. It's all been positive, so.
All right, so we have council action on this?
I mean, I'll be honest with you. I'd prefer to go with the group that we did not have do the wage study, which is the alternative that she's suggesting.
I think that's a good check.
Just because we have a check and balance, exactly. Ready for motion?
Yep, and let's make motion.
Okay, Sandy, what's the name of this group again?
New Focus.
I would move that we hire New Focus to complete the update for our personnel policy.
I'll second that.
Sandy?
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
What timeframe did you say probably to have that?
I'm sorry, I'll have to have you sign some paperwork, send that in, and then I'm sure she'll
Okay.
Come back with the timeframe.
We'll let the public know as soon as we know.
Yeah.
At the next meeting.
Yeah.
All right, flood report.
Mike's not here.
Mike's not here, okay. So we have envisioned, actually, if the other council doesn't mind if we want to do Jimmy's first or?
No, I thought I was next. I'm sorry. I got a little
All right. Invision Ellisville, I see Dan here.
I didn't see Dan sitting there.
He had his eyes closed, so you couldn't see him.
That's right, you did.
Thank you. Just a brief report. We're looking forward to our Invision Ellisville celebration, public celebration on Tuesday, May 17th, from 5:00 to 7:00 here at the town hall. And this event is posted on the Invision Ellisville Facebook page. Please go to that and share it with your friends. We're trying to get a big crowd here. The, we've got 538 followers so far and growing. A news release is about to be released. It'll be going out soon. Krista Curtis arranged for a Cook event planner to help us with the celebration. And Cook has supplied that to us, which is great. We're continuing on our implementation plan. And congratulations to Mike Kent, Denise, and the town of Ellisville for securing the Next Level Trails grant because that was kind of the number one thing that people talked about in the survey that we did for Invision Ellisville. And the celebration is going to be kind of a big deal. I think we're going to have some snacks, but there's also going to be a food truck here. And they're talking about maybe having a balloon and some other things. So I want to thank everybody for their continued support and for supporting this project. And I want to be sure that everyone that is available will come to our event.
Thank you.
Quite the reverse, in fact.
All right, next up on the agenda. Jimmy, you are on deck. It's
Thank you very much.
New business, police department request to hire chief deputy.
We want to hire a chief deputy. Want to thank the town council for the things we went through and the interviews we went through. It was a good time, for the most part. And I want to tell you just a little bit about our candidate. If I stood here tonight and read his resume, we'd be here till sometime in the wee hours of the morning. So just to kind of narrow it down a little bit, our candidate was born and raised in Louisville, Kentucky. He attended Dupont Manuel High School. He came to Bloomington to go to school here, so IUPD also in the late 60s, early 70s, went back, returned to Louisville and joined the Louisville Police Department and did retire there as a detective in the department. He came back to Bloomington in 1996 with the IUPD as a sergeant in 1996. And then again, he retired from IUPD in 2016 as an operation lieutenant. He's just been waiting for another chance to serve the residents of Indiana. But I want to present to you tonight George F. Robinson, would submit to you he'd be approved for Ellisville PD Assistant Chief. George, you want to come forward?
Hey Jimmy, I have a quick question. Did we, where did we post the? I guess what I'm trying, where did we post this, outside and in-house at the same time? Or did we just?
No, we recruited.
Recruited, okay. And I apologize for missing the meeting too, so.
Okay, thank you. If you have questions for George or George, if you'd like to say something. Well, I just appreciate the opportunity to continue my law enforcement career and thank everyone for their for their thoughts and hope I can do a good job. We also have his wife Kathy. She is a Bloomington dispatcher, so police department dispatcher, so.
Any questions?
None.
All right, we have council action.
I would move that we approve the hire of George Robinson as the chief deputy of the Ellisville Police Department.
I'll second it.
Sandy?
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, George.
Congratulations.
Would you like for me to administer the oath?
Yes, I would. George, come on, we're going to deliver the oath.
Got to make you official and put you to work.
You want to come up here, George?
Sure. Kathy, you go stand by.
And you're welcome to face the camera if you want. You, I'll just, you can just repeat. You could look out there.
I'll hide behind you so I don't photobomb you.
I, George F. Robinson III
I, George F. Robinson III
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the State of Indiana
The Constitution of the State of Indiana
And the Town Code of Ellisville
And the Town Code of Ellisville
And that I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially
And diligently
And diligently
Discharge and perform my duties
Discharge and perform my duties
As chief deputy
As chief deputy
Marshal
Marshal.
I'm sorry, of the Ellisville Police Department
Of the Ellisville Police Department
Ellisville, Indiana
Ellisville, Indiana
According to the law
According to the law
And to the best of my skill and ability
To the best of my skill and ability
So help me God
So help me God.
Thank you. And I have, I need your signature. One more, too. One more. It's rushing you right through, Barbie.
I'm always rushing, George, but you used to.
It's kind of like buying a house, I guess.
It's worse than buying a house.
And George, this one's for you. Thank you. Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Okay, next on the agenda, water utility decrease in the scheduled rates and charges to reflect the removal of utility receipt tax.
I have a list to fill. Can I say that you can add? You can add to. The utility receipt tax was repealed as of July 1st, 2022. This reduces the water rate to reflect that reduction. In order to file with the IURC, the president needs to sign the verified statement in support of the change of schedule in rates and charges, along with the legal notice, which are in your packet there. After the IURC approval, a new rate ordinance will be presented to the council for final approval.
Okay. So we don't need any action on just, this is just, or do we?
You need to, I think, vote to have the town council president sign Exhibit 1, which is just the authorization that you're giving Baker Tilly or in the IURC to proceed in this matter, so.
All right.
I would move we do just that. Second.
Sandy?
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next is Community Crossings Matching Grant Award.
That's me.
All right.
Denise from Planning. The town of Ellisville has been awarded a Community Crossings Matching Grant Award in the amount of $264,552 for paving streets in Ellisville. The total cost to pave the streets is $352,736. And Ellisville's match is 25% or $88,184. And that comes from the motor vehicle highway restricted roads and alleys funds. The funds from the grant are going to pave 14 streets. Endot awarded 224 grants totaling $107 million and some odd dollars. So KIP will be ready to do bids, I think, in May. We're under a timeframe from Endot to get everything going. I could name the streets if you want, or it's just 14?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Is it publicly available anywhere?
Yes.
It's on our website.
Yes. And KIP, you were going to talk about the bids?
Yeah, I just want to let you all know that I submitted for 21 streets to get done, and we got 14 out of 21. So I'm pretty happy with that. Like Denise said, I'm going to advertise the bids in May, the county council, June 13th meeting for acceptance of the bids. And that's about all I have.
And then Endot's requesting a motion to have the president sign a grant agreement so I can provide him with the minutes. And rather than do this every time I have a grant agreement, I talked to Darla, and she said we could just ask for a motion if you agree for the president just to sign any grant agreements.
Personally, I kind of like you bringing them to us so we know kind of what's going on when
Oh, I would. I would tell you, it's just
Summer time sensitive, and we may not meet that time period.
Sure. But just, like I said, keep us informed because we have people asking about things and we kind of look silly when we say, well, I don't know anything about it, so.
Yes.
That's the only thing I would ask.
Endot just changed things last year, and it was a little bit of a mess. They switched to DocuSign, and we were under time constraints. And then everything was different with COVID and stuff.
And I promise to, if you guys do authorize that, I'll be the second. In case Denise gets busy or whatever, I'll let you guys know, hey, they had me.
I have, just don't try and answer until you get the code. Because if you open it once, you don't have the code, which comes later.
Yes.
It voids it.
Oh, boy. Okay.
So I just need a motion for that, please.
Any council action on that?
I would move that we give council president blanket authority to sign grant awards. Second.
Sandy?
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I think the next
Thanks very much.
Welcome. Next, I believe, is you two also, isn't it Denise?
Yes.
Next level's Trails Grant Award. I had a spoiler, saw it on Facebook, so.
I know, this is like the best news.
Yeah.
Town of Ellisville has been awarded a Next Level Trails Grant in the amount of $1,131,933. The grant will add 2.11 miles of accessible trail for pedestrians and bicyclists in Ellisville. The trail will be 12 feet wide, and the trailhead will be out there behind town hall. The trail will provide a connection to Monroe County's Cars Farm Greenway Trail. Grant funds are to be used for design and engineering, trail constructions, restrooms, a bridge, signage, bicycle rack, trailhead kiosk, and other small amenities. Total project cost is $2,160,961. And our match is $1,029,028, or 47.6% of the total project cost. Our match is comprised of an in-kind match of labor and equipment, generous donations totaling $8,000, and ARPA funds. Trail is to be constructed by June 7th, 2024. The state received 61 applications, awarded 38 grants totaling $65 million for 77 miles of new trails.
Awesome. Good job on that.
Thank you.
Any council comments on this?
Is the trail open 24 hours, or do they shut the trails down after a certain time? Do you know?
They'll be open all time.
24, are we having street lights there too, or?
They wouldn't fund it in this grant. That's something else to work on yet.
We can look into grants for lights and things like that. What about the police call boxes? Are we going to have those throughout?
We never discussed those. I guess I didn't know about them, but they probably wouldn't have funded that.
Those become exceedingly problematic. They seem like a good idea on the surface.
Do they? Teenagers mess with them, or?
Yeah. The weather, teenagers, non-teenagers.
I think with how ubiquitous the cell phones are.
Right. Yeah, and I think if we have lighting along the trail, they'll be fine. It's just, it's a long trail. So it just kind of worries me, people going out late at night using it. But it's definitely a great idea. I mean, you know, definitely could use the walking myself, so I'll probably be using it a lot.
Sometimes you get a chance with the old, well, I call the old trail, the original trail. We've got the lights on it now.
Yeah, I seen that the other day. So.
And they are second set of lights, too, for the same reason.
And do you have it on the website where we're going to have the trail, the connectivity and all that, or?
Not yet. I just put it on as breaking news.
Sure. I don't mean to push or anything. It's wonderful that you've got this far, but yeah.
Yeah.
I'm excited.
It will go on there. And the first thing in our timeline after design and engineering and getting everything done, the restrooms are first on the list. And you'll see those go in based on when birds are doing something, nesting or something. We had to arrange our timeline to do things around that.
As Scott can attest, that we've been working on trails for 20-plus years in this town, and it's really great to finally see something happening, something big happen with it, so.
Well, it also took Endot to get us there. We had to meet with them with how to get across 46, and we did that a couple of years ago and to find out what they would approve. And so this is going to come out, go all the way from here to the Stewart property so that it can, they can cross Hart Street and get on the Cars Farm Greenway.
And I appreciate all the hard work you guys have put into it, people before you put into it. So it's been a long, long process, so. It's put into it, so it's been a long, long process, so it's wonderful to see it coming to an end, so.
Yes.
One recommendation I would make, and we could be promoted statewide for this, if our restrooms have really good toilet paper instead of the, instead of what I call printer paper. People will come miles just to walk our trail because they know we'll take care of them. Yes, I went there. All right, any other discussion on this? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none. Discussion on redistricting the Ellisville Town Council wards due to the 2020 census. Kevin, get this.
All right. Thank you. This came up much quicker than I was anticipating. I will say, I've been working on this, I like working on maps. While Denise was hard at work getting us all sorts of money in grants, I was playing with maps. So basically, every 10 years after a census, we have to redraw, well, not necessarily draw, but adjust our council wards, make sure they're fairly compact and even in population. And one of the things that I noticed when I was drawing everything out on the map is that some of the census blocks changed shape quite a bit and really threw a wrench in the way some of the districts were configured. So it required a few changes in here. This is just the first draft I put together. I was actually intending on doing this later in this year, but since I will be leaving in several weeks, I wanted to go ahead and get this in front of you now. So that way, I can hopefully get it finished up fairly soon or almost there, kind of help out as much as I can. So I guess what I am needing is feedback on what you like, what you don't like. I will say, I did try, I kept everyone in their council district, which was the biggest, I think, the biggest concern. Beyond that, I mean, I can shuffle things around a little bit here and there, but just trying to keep everything, keep everything equal and try and take into account where we're growing at. So I think, I left my notes in my office, but I think wards four and five and I think pretty much all of them except for Scott's have a lot of development going on in there. So I tried to get Ward 3 up higher now since it's not going to grow as much, the other ones, and that's just taking into account things we've already gotten where houses have been built for the last two, three years plus what's coming in the next year or two.
Council comments?
I think it's something we, you know, you gave us to us mid-week, something we probably ought to digest and particularly since we're missing two council members tonight.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think, you know, I know several of us have questions about certain things we'll have to get with you individually on.
Sure.
To sit here and mull them over is not going to be feasible time-wise. And I think we've got, at least William and I do, a couple of questions about several properties in their current status that, not that you've left out of here, but that I think have just slipped through over time, that don't really exist, but seemingly do.
Question?
I caught that you're leaving in a two or three weeks?
Yes, I'll be sending something out tomorrow officially.
Leaving for good?
Yes.
Oh, wow. Well, that's not good news.
So he really just has one more county to take care of this?
Wow.
What's the council's thought about having a work session on this?
Is there enough there to do anything with? I mean, if we're, are we going to try and reapportion it ourselves based upon?
Well, I think personally, we should stay away from it. I mean, that's my opinion. I think we should have, you know, an outside source or someone else do it. I mean, Darla, what are your feelings? Can we attack this? Because this is our different wards and, you know, the elections and things like that.
We have to approve it no matter what happens.
Right, I know.
That's true, we have to approve it, so.
And the main thing, if you were to read the email that Kevin sent out prior to the map, he tried to get each ward with as close a population as he could and that's the whole...
I think for equal reasons, what, 10%?
That's, it's not in code, but I know I've heard that before, I think, I don't know if that's what's gone through courts.
Well, I know that it is for county council districts because they, when they work, I was working kind of with our rep that was doing that, they didn't want to go above 10%, so I don't know if it's a general rule of thumb and we got it down about 2% to 3% for the county and I think that's a good target and I think that's where we are kind of in that with this map.
Well, my only concern with that is we have a lot of growth happening in a couple of districts. It's, I can, I can do that and make it very equal now and five years from now, it'll be...
Very lopsided.
Yeah.
See, that was kind of my question, not to open the can of worms, but since we're going down that rabbit hole, we will. And not that it matters because we represent the entire town, but I'm landlocked, I've got really no development. How'd I lose area?
Yeah, that's a question I have, too.
Your population actually went up.
How? We didn't build any houses.
I mean, when I re, well, when I added, so I added the rest of Kelly Heights that was not in your district previously.
Okay.
So that picked up about 200 people.
Oh, the new addition back in there off of Meadowlands.
And I take it for District 2, which is mine, Loudoun Road, that area there is where we're picking up population.
You, I anticipate, besides what's already started, that there's going, the rest of that is going to develop sooner than later.
And you cut mine off because I probably have the most going on.
So. You were going to have a lot of people.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I actually, the way I looked at it, started with Ward 4, which is Dan's, and kind of worked backward from there, trying to figure out where we're going to be in a few years.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and it's, and really, that was just my thought, I can, with the mapping system, I can change things relatively easily, so that's not a big deal, however you would like it. I just, like I said, I wanted to spend a little more time on this, but with the shortened timeframe, I wanted to throw it out there so that way, if you want to do it now, we could, if not, I mean, you still have the rest of the year really to finalize.
Let me ask you, and this, this might be a Sandy or, I don't know, somebody probably here knows, especially Darla, I know for the county commissioners, there is a vote where the commissioners had decided that eventually that even other district, the whole county votes and, because it used to be where they voted per district where they live. Did the same thing happen here in Ellisville?
I don't know the history, I know that there was a time where we had one open and that was taken away. Mike Kornman, are you still on there?
Yes, I am.
Can you help me out? I know that we had an at-large member at one point in time, I can't remember the timeframe, and why did that change?
That was just before I got involved in the council and I think during the redistricting from about 1980, where we were, I'm sorry, mid-time, 1985, whenever they decided to do it, we had large, they just had five wards. But the wards, I remember which one it was when they decided to have them on the off-year elections and that's the best I can give you on that.
And I talked to Kevin and said, since we can all vote on all of the wards, then why can we not just all be at large and not have to worry about District 8? And his answer was, we missed our time.
Someone said that, did Mike Kornman say that?
I don't know.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
My understanding, unless the law has changed, that you'll have a certain window after the census, maybe the first year, so this is the only time you can do that, that be able to, you know, something for doctoral research, you guys were interested in doing something like that.
I was actually curious if there's ever a time where like the Ward 1 population voted for Ward 1, Ward 2 for Ward 2?
No, not now. I don't think towns, 35 cities you can, I don't think towns are allowed to do that, so.
Okay. But yeah, I don't think.
When are we up to redistrict again?
Every census, every 10 years.
Yeah.
But can we redistrict based upon whether, whether it's buildings and/or annexations before the 10 years?
I think you have to have a special census done, which is quite expensive.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And how are we handling annexations now?
Just trying to plug them into the closest ward? Yeah, typically, they'll go, they'll get tacked on to whatever ward they were adjacent to.
Scott, you've had some new growth, too, out in Overbrook. There's a lot of new houses have gone in that area.
But, no, again, it doesn't matter, it's irrelevant to me, you know, because we're representing the entire town. It just, some of it, when I went to look at it logically, it's like, eh, where do we go there?
Yeah, in your neighborhood, some of it did disappear, I see that now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, and I'll be honest, that was mostly the function of they redrew the census blocks, so if you kept that one, they would have gone all the way out to Ratliff, which...
Right.
It is what it is.
They were cut Ward 5 in half back.
Yeah, it's, they, they didn't do us any favors the way they drew these blocks.
Yeah, I remember the one before this one, my district was, you could put all the other districts inside of mine, it was huge and so when they divided mine off, I think Scott got the biggest half of mine, because I used to have everything north of 46 there.
Yeah, but mine encompassed half of 2. We all shifted to the east.
Yeah.
Because you look at some of the stuff back from the early 90s.
Over here used to be my ward, so.
Well, Kevin, thank you for doing it, though.
Appreciate it.
I mean, I think it's definitely a place to start, but we should probably wait for the other two council members to weigh in before we make too much.
If I have any questions before, I'll email you.
Yeah, please email me anything and I can, I'll be happy to go over all my numbers and how I kind of came to where I did, but like I said, I can shift anything on there pretty easily.
Hate to hear you're leaving, too.
No.
Hope you're moving on to bigger and better things, so.
It was a tough decision.
Okay. Seeing, discuss that privilege of the floor.
Rick Hoppich, my opinion, I couldn't be here tonight, so here I am. And what we're talking about is the senior housing project and the connection fee for the sewer. We gave them a cost for that connection fee back last year in April and obviously, if everybody knows since that time, then the connection fee increased. And so the real question is, is what is their actual connection fee? We didn't feel like it was a decision that we could make in the staff level, so we wanted to bring it before the council. Because it's a significant increase from, you know, $53,000 to $88,000, so roughly $1,000 per equivalent dwelling unit. So that's the real question is, they were given the number, they put it in their budget back last April. It's come time, they're getting ready to finish up the project and they paid their water connection fees and now they're getting ready to pay their sewer connection fees, but then they're saying, well, there's a new, a new cost and so we need a determination as to what that cost should be. Dennis Fisher's here with the housing authority that can speak more on it if you'd like, but that's the question, whether it's the price that they were made aware of last April or the increase in price which just happened earlier this year.
Personally, I feel if we've quoted them a price and they based a budget on it, then we need to stick to that price.
Were they supposed to pay at that time, quoted them the price?
No, they generally pay when the project's wrapped up and everything starts connecting to the sewer so that in case something happens in the meantime, you know, the project fails or something like that.
Are these hook-on fees, are they coming to Ellisville or Eastern Richland? Or Ellisville?
This is Ellisville, yeah.
Okay. And I just briefly read this right before I walked into the meeting, Dennis had mentioned that there was a email, so I'm really, this is just thrown on me at the last second, so I really don't know all the information and stuff. I would like to table this and kind of check into everything and...
Sure.
Talk to Mike and, and find out what's going on and...
I'd be inclined to that, too, because I found it right before the meeting, too.
And kind of get the whole spiel of it. So Dennis, if you don't mind coming up, basically, from what I got from the text was that you guys were told a certain fee, the hook-on fee, and then we raised the hook-on fee while you guys were in construction, correct?
Yeah, my question is, does, since our building permit was issued last year, I don't know what your, is this only for new customers that get a building permit in January? If it is, then we owe the grandfather, I would think. That's, and I don't know where that falls.
It's my understanding it wasn't based on when the building permit was issued.
Okay, so when, I mean, typically, when do they pay that hook-on fee and stuff? Right?
When they actually hook on to the water.
Okay. And I also seen, you're already hooked on, correct?
Well, we hooked in pretty close to the end of January or February, but this didn't come up till a couple of weeks ago when Mike brought it up that it went up. And he said, he could know more about it, but this is the thing, we have an old permit, we're not a new customer, we're trying to finish this project and all of a sudden, we're getting hit with $35,000 more.
So do you know the exact time you guys hooked on? What date?
It's either, I asked Stanger, it's either the last week of January, the first week of February.
And we passed this resolution January 20th this year.
Yeah. I was told it's January, or February 1st, Sandy said tonight, it was in January.
All right, and did you, were you told at that time when you guys hooked on that our fee had raised or he just said, okay, you're hooked on, blah, 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 or?
I don't know, since, I don't live in town, I don't read all that, but I don't know when this started, October, September, when do you guys, you know, Rick, when it started? There was, this all started while we already had a permit was building these, so it didn't go in effect until January of this year.
All right, if you don't mind, Dennis, I think we need to table this and discuss it over with Mike and Rick or whoever, and Denise and all of them and kind of piece this together, because it was thrown on us the last minute, it's a big substantial number, so I'm sure you want us to look serious at it and not make harsh decisions, so.
How long are you going to wait? We're, it's raining, we're getting curbs and stuff in now and we're waiting on water meters to get put in, but we're, it's going to be June or July, but I don't want to wait till, it's just something we need to get paid.
No, I'm talking two weeks.
The next council meeting, well, it'll be more than two weeks is where the...
Oh, so three weeks.
So I can get your date here in a second.
The 9th.
The 9th, okay. April 9th, or May 9th, will that work for you? April 9th, we can go back in time, we're that powerful.
Like I said, I need to go back to the board because this just came up last week talking to Mike, he said, you haven't paid these, and I go, well, you sent us a bill, there's, you really don't have any in your ordinance when you have to pay it, it's not like two months after you start your job, so.
Yeah, see, I guess that's my big question, too, is why?
That's not on me, but we could have paid it.
Right, right, so.
Before this happened, that's what I'm saying, it's not the problem, because we already budgeted that money.
All right, well, let us look into it and hopefully we'll have a decision by the next meeting and if you would come back to the next meeting, it'd be great.
Now, Darla, do we need to have a motion on this at all since it wasn't officially on the agenda?
No, no motions.
I'll send somebody.
Is that consensus of the rest of the board, are you okay with that, Scott?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. I think all of us are...
And Dennis, you're available if we have questions and stuff.
Oh, yeah, I'm on the job every day.
And we'll, we'll have a decision next. We're not gonna, you know, you're not going to be here next meeting and, well, let's table, no, we're not going to do that to you because...
Well, we might. No, I'm kidding.
You might, but I...
It's one thing, Mike says it went up and they can't make the decision.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
So we like to get it done and thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Dennis.
They got, kind of got caught in the middle of it.
Yeah, it sounds like it, but it's just such a late notice, I mean, five minutes before I walk into a meeting, I just can't make, that's, $35,000 is a lot of money to make a quick decision on, so.
Okay, any more privilege of the floor? A supervisor comment, then, or do you want to put either one?
Under privilege of the floor, we're getting ready to start food truck Wednesdays in May. I thought I had a firm date, but it's close to IU graduation, I guess the food trucks go there, so it will be on Wednesdays and we'll block off Sale Street, but hopefully at the May 9th meeting, I'll have the firm dates for it.
Awesome.
That's it.
Denise, I would ask that, I remember, was...
Denise, I would ask that, I remember, was it last year or the year before that it went on so long that no one was coming at the end, and we were still paying our guys to shut down the street, and they had no business? So is it gonna last all the way till October, November, or?
No, when it starts, it's going to be every other week through the end of August.
Okay. That sounds more.
About 4:00 to 8:30, and then I think the streets will close around 3:30, and then they'll open them up. And we're doing, ordering some 12-by-12 tents to make, break down a little easier on who's there.
What does that cost our guys roughly? Do we have to pay them overtime, and?
Kip has to answer that.
The guys will be, we'll start seven, about 10 o'clock. It takes time to fill up the water barricades, the water barricades up for savings reasons on Sale Street. We'll have all set up at 4:00. Typically, we usually just have two guys come in, look the barricades out, and it's usually a two-hour call out and then what it is.
So two hours for two guys?
Yes.
And that's just every other week, correct?
Yes, starting night four, every other 30, till sometime like you said in August.
Except, Kip, I just found out, we have to change the date, so I'll let you know when we have a firm date.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Nothing on the fourth?
No.
Now, Sandy, you may be the one to answer this. The revenue from the food trucks, the sales tax we paid, where does that go? Is Ellisville, is Ellisville able to, is that that 1% for the food and beverage tax, who gets credit for that, for the food trucks?
I'm sorry, that is both my favorite. I have no idea.
Who would know?
We're getting any of that counted.
Because we should, because it is in Ellisville.
I don't think we're getting any food and beverage tax.
And every restaurant you go to in Ellisville is paying, we're paying that.
Well, right, yeah, right now, we don't have enough volume of tax, of gross sales to be on the taxes.
Even with Starbucks and the coffee shop, isn't it?
Well, we maybe, yeah, it's getting there.
Do you know who determines that? The volume?
That, probably the Food and Beverage Tax Council, which was representative of the City Common Council and the Monroe County, and I think to some other businesses. So we probably need to start reaching out to them.
I think it's the county councils. They're the main.
Well, yeah, they went ahead and formed an local agreement to do a Food and Beverage Tax Council, kind of like we do PS Lit.
But don't they report to the county council, and then?
And the city council. It's, that's why, that's a briar patch right now.
Well, I think, I think we definitely need to check into it.
We do, because once we hit a certain threshold, we can have a voting member on that board. And we don't currently.
Are you instructing, you're looking at me, you might.
Please, I don't know who else would be able to do it. Darla? Okay, thank you.
Darla, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Sandy, I'm very happy you look at her.
I know, I could ask Jimmy, but Jimmy's probably, if I show up with a police car and, you know, fully armed, they may think something else.
Well, I'll take the money.
Yeah. Back up that Brink's truck, right? All right. Any supervisor comments?
I have, I'd like to explain that I put an ad in last Friday's paper to reestablish the cumulative capital fund. It was established in 1994, and the rate is set after a three-year phase-in at .05. As the AV grows, our rate goes down, so every three to five years, it's suggested that we reestablish it to maintain that rate. Our rate had dropped down to .0439, and so this will reestablish it for 2023 to go back up to the 05, and that is where we buy the police cars from and computer equipment for the town. It's a very minor increase, but it's, it's nice to maintain that level.
But it's really maintaining the level of what we needed and what we originally passed and increased, so it's not like a new tax that's just coming.
No, 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 no new tax.
Yeah, there's some misstatements on Facebook that, you know, we're putting in a new tax, and people need to read the notices carefully.
Fake news.
We reestablished it in 2019, and we also did the cumulative building fund then, but evidently, legislation has changed, because the cumulative building fund no longer goes down, so it stayed at .0333. Yeah, so, Mike, did you have any comment you wanted to add on this CCD fund? Okay. Is there any questions from the council for that? It will be coming to you then at the next meeting in resolution form for your approval, and I will have to, there's a remonstrance period of 30 days, and then I have to get a certificate from the auditor to make sure there wasn't no one that remonstranced against it before that we can go into place. It is a standard procedure, though. Everyone, the county, the city, everyone does this.
Any other supervisor?
Just thank you for your support tonight. I appreciate it, and look forward to seeing you next time.
Mike, do you have a comment? Nope.
All right. Seeing none?
Uh.
Oh. Oh, Kip, I'm sorry, I thought, sorry about that.
I just wanted to put a reminder out. We've been getting a few emails and inquiries about when bus things drive, when different services and sick more drive and all that. That was on the July 2021, when they crossed the train. Like I said, everybody knows DNB was awarded it. I have been in contact with DNB, and they are wanting to wait, which is logical, when school's out, to start doing the work and resurfacing up there in that area. Just wanted to put that out there for the citizens.
And thank you. My apologies, Kip. I'm so sorry.
No problem.
I didn't even see Mike, if it's any consolation. I'm just tuned out to Zoom, which I shouldn't be, but, all right. Seeing no more supervisor comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved. Second.
What were you gonna say? You gonna say something?
No council comments.
Oh.
We don't want to comment.
Okay.
Not worth listening to.
All right.